Good morning, everybody. We welcome you to the August 5th, 2025 meeting of the Coward County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Dana Jerrance if he would come up and give us an invocation, please.
Let us pray. Gracious Creator, we come this day in thanksgiving, thankful for our lives and thankful for being citizens of a great nation, great state. And God, we give you particular thanks for this place we call Calvert, our home that has carved into each of our hearts a special meaning and a special purpose. Now this day, as our leaders gather, we pray for them and we pray for wisdom from above. We pray for power and the strength to discern that which is within your will. And we ask for carriage that they might make the difficult decisions that basically serve the whole. And so, God, this day, we thank you, we praise you, and we move forward, praying that all that is done this day in this assembly will glorify you. We ask this in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you, Reverend Jones. My classmate always liked to brag on Reverend Jones. We won't say when we went to school here in Coward County, but we did go to school here in Coward County. Reverend Jones comes to us from Mount Olive Church, right here in Protonic on Darris Beach Road.
Always remember, seventy-three, always remember.
It's a privilege and a pleasure to have you with us this morning, Reverend Jones. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
I have none. We approve and adopt the agenda submitted.
Check it.
I have a motion on the second that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do have some public service announcements today. First of all, we want to welcome our new deputy county administrator, Mr. Stephen McGivens. Stephen comes to us from local government where he served for thirty years in the finance department and retired from that position, but decided he wasn't done. So after an exhaustive search and lots of interviews, Stephen certainly rose to the top and his first day was yesterday. So we all want to welcome you. We look forward to working together and serving our citizens.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
And yesterday, some of you may know, we had an incident at the Southern Branch Library in Solomon's. And here, that's created some stir around about citizens concerned about safety at libraries. I just want to tell you that it's the first instance, I think, that we've ever had in this regard at a public library. You should not be scared to go to a library. This was a random act carried out by an individual that had some issues and that could have happened anywhere in Coward County, just the day and age that we live in. It's just unfortunate that it happened in our public library where people should feel safe. The sheriff, the gentleman was apprehended. He is incarcerated currently in our jail. The sheriff is going to increase patrols around the Southern Library. But unfortunately, excuse me, the world that we live in today, these incidents occur. And you know, you hear it on TV all the time where there are something that happens and they interview people and they say, "It's such a peaceful, quiet community. We never thought it would happen here." But unfortunately, it does. But we just want to reemphasize that we're taking all the measures that we can to make sure everybody feels safe in Coward County. But it was just very unfortunate that occurred yesterday. And the individual that was injured is going to make a full recovery, so we're very happy for that. But just want to make sure everybody feels safe. We do the best we can. It is the safest county in the state of Maryland, according to the sheriff. And so, we thank the sheriff's office for all their hard work and dedicated service to our citizens. So, but please, don't be afraid to attend the county library. Also, tonight is National Night Out. If you're not familiar with National Night, it's a national evening where communities pull together, generally have events, and within their communities, there are, I think, twelve or thirteen communities in the county tonight that are going to have community events. Usually, there's, I don't want to say usually, a lot of them have food. They have activities going on for youth. A lot of county government institutions participate, the health department, the school board, nonprofits. They're great. If you haven't been to one, you should go. Even if you don't live in the community, you're always welcome to come in. But it's a great night for people to get together and know their neighbors and socialize and celebrate this great area that we live in. So if you want to know where those events start tonight, you can go to www.cowardcountymaryland.gov/casaevents. And that'll give you a full listing of the neighborhoods and the times. Also, planning zoning has started initiative to do, to, for town center surveys. So if you live in the towns of Owings, Huntington, or St. Leonard, or even if you don't, you should participate in the survey because these decisions will inform what the, will help inform decisions of what those towns are going to look like as we move forward in the future. As you know, there's been some discussion lately about what's going on in some of the towns. So this is where that happens. This is where those decisions are made about what those towns are going to look like. So you need to participate. We say that all the time. Please participate. So this is your opportunity. The surveys have gone out. I think they're due in twenty days from now. And we'll have a meeting in September to get the results of those surveys. If you want to do a survey, it's at www.cowardcountymaryland.gov/towncenterupdate. And as I said, those surveys are out right now and due back by August 25th. Please participate and provide your feedback. And this month is Animal Shelter Month. It's clear the shelter campaign, so all animals at the animal shelter have no adoption fees for the month of August. Most of you know we've started bringing an animal in at every one of our meetings, and that animal, until we have another meeting, is, has free adoption. But for the month of August, you can adopt any animal in the shelter. This is all made possible by a collaborative effort between the Friends of Linda L. Kelly Animal Shelter and the Board of County Commissioners. Their adoption includes spade or neuter surgery, microchipping, age-appropriate vaccinations, and a starter care package to help get pets transitioned into their new homes. So please, the shelter is open Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Or if you want to schedule an appointment, you can call 410-535-7387. And that brings us down to the animal of the week. Good morning.
Good morning. Marty, they just love you, Marty. I'm telling you, how many you got at the house now, anyway?
One, too shy. So I'm April, here today with Otter. She is, believe it or not, thirteen years old.
Wow.
Very, very much puppy energy to her, but she came into our care as a stray about a month ago, probably one of the worst matting cases we've seen. We were not able to locate the owner, so we had a grooming service that came to the shelter and donated their time, gave her this wonderful haircut. From what we believe, she's some sort of doodle, maybe a golden doodle. But yeah, she's just been waiting for a home and is overly friendly.
She's a social butterfly.
Yeah, she is.
Way too social. Trying to get through the metal detector was a nightmare. Didn't let anybody through because she had to meet everybody.
She's gorgeous. She looks healthy.
Yeah, yeah. She's got a few old lady lumps and bumps, kind of raspy breathing, but that just comes with age. So really, she's been my office maid a few times, and she playbows and is an absolute nuisance. She doesn't nap. She's, if you want a dog that just goes for walks and is just overly friendly, then come get Otter.
And how full is the shelter?
The shelter is at capacity right now. So we are full with cats and dogs. We actually have a lot of our, we're having a special on ducks. I don't know why.
Really?
Don't even ask. They're just coming out of the woodworks.
Really?
Do you want a duck? Please.
How many ducks you think you got?
I don't, they're just coming in in the flocks, literally.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's, we just had to get new baby pools and everything.
Oh, wow.
We have rabbits, guinea pigs, you name it at this point. We probably have it in some nook at the building, so we have plenty of animals up for adoption.
And people wonder why we've started doing this. It's to highlight the animals that we have in the shelter and let people know that there are lots of animals available and not just dogs and cats, as she said.
Yeah.
A little bit of everything. And so, if you're looking for a housemate or someone to play with the kids, you know, it's a great place to go.
Yeah.
Especially when you get free adoption, because sometimes adoptions aren't cheap.
Yeah, so she's spayed, microchipped, and ready to go today. So, all right. She does not have any. Get out of here, Otter.
And of course, her adoption will be free.
It's free, yeah.
Because in the month of August, they're all going to be free. She's not special. Oh, Lord!
Couch goat.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is proclamations. We have two today. The first one is National Farmers Market Week.
Good morning. I'm Caroline Trossback, the Agricultural Development Specialist with Economic Development, and we're here to celebrate National Farmers Market Week all this whole week. Today, we're taking this time to say a sincere thank you to many different people, most importantly, our vendors and our customers, whose weekly support has helped all markets grow. Our market hosts of Calvert Health on Tuesday afternoons, Dunkirk District Park on Thursday afternoons, and the town of North Beach on Saturday mornings are very supportive and community-focused. Several Coward County government employees' work contributes to these successful markets, both forward-facing and behind the scenes. We appreciate the Maryland market money and the Women, Infants, and Children Programs teams, along with the Food Access Coordinators for their support with nutrition benefits programs. Vendors are getting ready, as we speak, for the Prince Frederick Market this afternoon from 2:30 to 5:30 in the hospital's north campus parking lot. Thanks for helping Calvert County celebrate National Farmers Market Week, and I'd like our fantastic vendors and market hosts to come up and introduce themselves. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Dunn. I own Cardinal Creek Plant Farm alongside my parents and my brother. We're vendors at the Calvert Health Market every Tuesday and at the North Beach Farmers' Market every Saturday. And I am also president of the Calvert County Farmers Market Association.
Hi, I'm Jenna Ross.
What's your name?
Celine.
And we own Celine's Naturals together. We make all skincare, body care, home care. It's very therapeutic for her and I, as she does have autism. And I do want to introduce her to the world of business, and I want her to be able to do all the things. So we are at the farmers market behind Calvert Health. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This way.
Good morning. I'm Ryan Clodder. I'm a beekeeper and I operate Pleasant Peninsula Apiary. It's located just off Stokely Road, west of Prince Frederick. And my beautiful and hard-working lady bees make delicious honey that I sell at the farmers' market behind Calvert Health Medical Center, and I'll be there this afternoon. So thank you for acknowledging National Farmers Market Week.
My name is Mike Cox, Prince Frederick, White Oak Point Farm. We've been supporting the markets for twenty-five years now, and I think Commissioner Hans and Cox would understand what I'm saying, that years ago, my grandfather looked at it and said, "There's no way this is going to work." You can't sell stuff for fifty cents and a dollar, make it. But I say for the support of the county, the other vendors, and the community that supports it, we've done very well, and I appreciate everybody's help through that.
Come on, Mike. Mike?
Mackenzie Orange. I am with Calvert Health Medical Center, and as it's been mentioned, we host the Tuesday Market this afternoon.
Erin Farley with Calvert Health Medical Center. As we've said, we host Tuesday's Market. We are so excited all, every Tuesday, to welcome the community onto the campus. As you know, we are addressing food insecurity, making equal access to healthy foods for all of Calvert County.
Good morning. I'm Kate Palermo with the Fainted Goat Flower Farm in Dunkirk. We put some seeds in the ground and then we harvest, and we attend the Dunkirk Market with this handsome fellow and young woman behind me, and we'll continue to help try to make the Dunkirk Market grow. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Amanda Wise. This is Baby Jack. I'm a farmer with Red Dog Produce Farm. I'm a small-time, organic vegetable farmer, and I go to farmers' markets in the county, the Calvert Health Market and the Dunkirk Market. And I'm also the treasurer for the Coward County Farmers Market Association.
Good morning. I'm Bobby Bonner, Bull Rush's Cafe and Caney Creek Catering. Our food truck is at the North Beach Farmers Market every Saturday morning, and we love to use Cardinal Creek and Cox Farms and Sassafras, local farmers' products on our food truck. So thank you.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Spurling. I'm the park planner with Parks and Recreation, and I help facilitate the Dunkirk Farmers' Market held on Thursday afternoons.
Good morning. My name is Treasure Thomas. I'm the owner of My Mustard Seed. We grow organic microgreens in the area for the last six years. We started off at Calvert Health, and then we moved over to North Beach Farmers Market, and we also now operate a farm store in the county.
Good morning. My name is Susie Gibson. I'm here today on behalf of the Calvert County Farm Bureau, and I wanted to thank everyone in our community, as well as everyone here in the Calvert County Government, as well as our farmers, for all the support for our farming community.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Frey, and I work in economic development. Thank you, commissioners, for your support of farmers' markets in our area.
Good morning, everyone. Sheba Smith, Deputy Director for Economic Development. And I just want to take this moment to publicly thank all of the vendors that are associated with the farmers' market, because you keep coming over and over, and your commitment is truly appreciated. All of our citizens for their continuous support as well. Thank you for making our markets viable.
Good morning. Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. I just wanted to also thank our vendors and our farmers' markets for being such a big part of our economy here in Calvert County and for being an important outlet for all of our farmers. Thank you very much.
Katrina Briscoe. I'm with the Small Business Development Center, and we actually support businesses for Calvert County in one-on-one counseling and resources. And if you are not a part of SBDC to get that type of support, you can definitely reach out to me, again, Katrina Briscoe, and thank you all so much for what you all do.
So good morning. I want to thank all of you for coming out and taking times out of your busy schedule to be here today, and especially for what you do in the community the rest of the year. As you, most of you, if you pay attention, a couple weeks ago, we celebrated BiLocal Week, which is a statewide event. Today, we're celebrating this national event, which is farmers' markets. And also, if you saw on the news this week, in DC, for the entire week, they're having a farmers' market on the National Mall. So, you know, farmers' markets are very important for our farmers to have opportunity to sell their products at a retail level and not wholesale. As Mike alluded to, it's hard to make money selling wholesale. But when you have an opportunity to sell your products directly to consumers, you can get a little extra value to that, and you can keep people on the farm and farming. And in Coward County, we always hear about how important it is for our rural character, and keeping those farmers farming is what keeps that rural character. We have to keep our farmers profitable. And whenever you buy produce from a farmers' market, that money stays directly in that farmer's pocket, stays in the community, gets circulated four or five times. So it's very, very helpful for our communities, and we want to thank all of you for what you do to help that keep us going in that regard. And if you, if you paid a little bit of attention, it's not just food at the farmers' markets. You can buy soaps, you can buy juice drinks, you can buy clothing, you can buy just about anything you need at individual farmers' markets. So if you go to our website, which I can't recite from memory.
CalvertAg.com.
CalvertAg.com. It will, it will give you the listing, if you couldn't pay attention today like me, of when the farmers' markets are. Sometimes it lists the vendors that are there. You can also go on the website. It will tell you the farmers that we have in our county and what they sell when the farmer market's not going on. So it's very important to come out and support our farmers' markets. We want to help our, thank our partners that sponsor those markets, at Calvert Health. It's a great market. It's a little tucked away, so you have to look for it to find it, but we appreciate all of you do to help our farmers' markets. So, whereas the week of August 3rd through 9th, 2025, has been designated National Farmers' Market Week by the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture, and whereas farmers, ranchers, and watermen provide Americans with access to healthy foods produced locally and regionally through farmers' markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmers' markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing to the U.S. economy. And whereas farmers' markets serve as significant outlets for small to medium, beginning and experienced agricultural producers to market agricultural products, in turn, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas, Coward County citizens recognize the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities to help generate income for farmers, ranchers, and watermen, and to help stimulate business development and job creation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County that the week of August 3rd through 9th, 2025 be known as National Farmers Market Week in Coward County, celebrating its twenty-sixth year. Further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Coward County encourages all citizens to recognize agricultural significant role and contribution to the local economy, environment, and quality of life. Given our hands and seal, this fifth day of August, 2025, signed by all five commissioners, thank you all very much for what you do.
I'm getting feeling a little like Caroline. I don't know what this is, you know? A little secure here.
It's nothing personal, Commissioner Harley, I promise. Three, two, one. Thank you so much.
So the next proclamation that we have this morning is for Black Business Month. Commissioner Harley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Julie, you want to get us started?
Sure, I would love to. Thank you very much, Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. August is National Black Business Month, which is a time to recognize and support black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs across the country. Black-owned businesses account for approximately two million companies or ten percent of U.S. businesses. Our Calvert County community thrives on these businesses, and to honor them, economic development will be spotlighting black-owned businesses throughout the month. We'll be sharing these features on Facebook, LinkedIn, and our website, choosecalvert.com. I'd also like to personally extend our appreciation to all the black-owned businesses, business owners who are here today and throughout the county. And I'd like to draw special attention to celebrate that this year is the twentieth anniversary of the CCMBA, the Calvert County Minority Business Alliance. And when Gail Reed comes up here to the microphone, I know she's going to be telling you a little bit more about that. Today, we have quite a few members of our community here to celebrate, and so thank you very much for being here today and for choosing Calvert County as home to your business. I'd like to invite you all to please come up and introduce yourself and to be part of the photo. Please don't be shy.
Good morning. Since my name was
Good morning. Since my name was called, I'm, I'm going to be first. So I, I just have a little bit to tell you about the association. So, the Calvert County Minority Business Alliance is celebrating their 20 years of service to Calvert County and it will be celebrating this entire year. CCMBA initial focus was on strengthening the local economy by promoting policies and programs that fostered the growth of minority and small businesses in Calvert County. We've been able to provide training, networking, opportunities for businesses to grow. And we've also been able to collaborate with the Calvert County Chamber of Commerce as well as the College of Southern Maryland. We also work with, with the SBA and with other, other groups in Calvert County in order to promote small businesses. This year, we're, as we celebrate 20 years, we plan to participate in the local scholarship programs, which we have been doing for a number of years. We provide funds for scholarships and for students who are going forward. We also provide training opportunities for anyone who's starting a small business that would like to have some training opportunities and we do provide that. We are planning to highlight those businesses this year with a fashion show, celebrating small businesses. So we're inviting small businesses to be a part of that fashion show. And we generally have a circle of, of businesses that provide all kinds of information and products to other people so that they learn about the, the products and how they benefit the community. As we move forward through this, this year, we would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the help that you've given us. The community has been a great support to us because they've helped us to move forward. The county Commissioners as well as the organizations have supported us as we go along. So we want to thank you all for everything that you've done for us this year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Thorn Carter. I too am a member of the Calvert Minority Business Alliance and I operate a business called Smart Ride Incorporated. We have been in business for 28, it'll be 29 years later this month. So I do appreciate the support of the community and hope we'll make it for at least a few more years.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Ford. I'm the owner and Director of Loving Arms Childcare Center. We've been in Prince Frederick since 2017 and very happy to serve families in this community. I'm also the owner of Young Kings and Queens Before and After Care. We were able to secure that location for our school-aged children. We've been there since 2023. So happy to serve the families in this community. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Rose Anna Vogt. I'm the founding director of the Circle of Angels Initiative and I'm also Vice President of CCMBA. The Circle of Angels propels people from poverty to prosperity in policy and advocacy and we've been around since the last century.
Good morning again. My name is Treasure Thomas. I'm the owner of My Mustard Seed. We operate an urban farm in St. Leonard. Thank you. We operate an urban farm in St. Leonard growing microgreens. We also are a member of CCMBA and we have worked with the Concerned Black Women of Calvert County as well. We do teachings. I teach at the Community College microgreen classes. We operate a farm store in Owings now and we do farmers markets, as you all know. Thank you.
Hi, I'm E. Lambert Richardson. I'm the owner of Elon Rochelle Day Spa and Health. I've had the privilege of being a massage therapist for over 20 years here in Calvert County. I just recently decided I needed to step back so that I could focus more on natural health and wellness from a faith-based perspective. On Wednesday, we offer free health and wellness classes to the community, trying to get you to eat healthy. I just believe our bodies are created to heal themselves. So we do choosin', free classes based on like vegetarianism, basically. And
Calvert County because you do have a decision and we do appreciate you here.
Good morning. I'm Kathy McAdams. I'm the Business Retention Specialist in Economic Development.
Good morning. I'm Nicole White, Business Development Specialist with Calvert County Economic Development.
Well, good morning, everybody. You know, kind of the theme is talked about how challenging it is. And I remember, I guess about 17, 18 years ago, when I was researching, doing the business I'm in, I was asking one of the, the guys I was serving, I'm like, you know, do you worry about anything? I mean, what, what, you know, you know, what, what, what scares you and stuff? He goes, nothing, except one thing. I said, what's that? He goes, people coming in the business. Y'all get it. Y'all get it. I mean, you know, one of you said something like, and hopefully we'll be around next few years, that's how we talk, you know, because there is no guarantees of anything coming through the door. There is no, well, we know, hey, October, we'll do this. Or no, there is none of that. And you know, and I'm sure you'll remember, you know, before COVID, things kind of had a pretty level barometer, at least it felt to me, you know. And man, since then, you know, I kind of thought after COVID, you know, things would kind of settle down and people would get, but it's like, it's almost like it hit a reset. And you almost have to re kind of look at how you do your business again and stuff. I mean, it's been, I tell my wife all the time, it's like, you know, I go, what's in the water? You know, because this just seems more challenging now than it ever has been. And no, it's tough and it's good to have the resources here at the county because, you know, sometimes you're on that phone where you have to call about your licenses or whatever. You just, you just put it on speaker and going about what you're doing, you know, because I mean, see, see all the heads nodding? I mean, isn't it crazy? And it seems like it gets longer and longer and I don't have the patience. I'll, I'll tell Karen, I'm like, look, I hate doing this to you, but I was on hold today for about an hour and a half. Can you just get started tomorrow? I mean, you know, and it, it is tough and it, but it's valuable, you know. And I just think we're different, you know. I mean, it's just, um, you see something and, you know, some folks see it like, you know, well, that's a chair, but we go, you know, I wonder what we could do with that chair, you know? I mean, and it's just, um, I don't know, I wouldn't have it any other way. I was being in four walls, just sitting there, you know what I mean? I, I like the challenge of it, I guess, you know. And, and I just want to say at the county, we thank you for everything you do because it's, it's not easy at all. And so, like the one gentleman said, making a living selling stuff for what, 50 cents or a dollar a piece? Ain't a lot of margin in that, isn't it? You know? And I'm sure somebody said, well, what if I bring you cash? Well, sell to you for 45 cents, you know? You know, what if I buy three of those tomatoes? Can I get them for like, you know, 39 cents or something? Yeah. So, all right, well, let me read this here for you folks. It says, whereas National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 by Frederick E. Jordan Senior and John William Templeton to recognize the contributions of black-owned businesses throughout the county and to encourage, excuse me, country and to encourage their continued development. And whereas black-owned businesses account for approximately 2 million companies or 10% of the US businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses, according to the US Census Bureau. And whereas Calvert County is home to black-owned businesses that provide family-supporting jobs and careers to residents throughout the county and serve a driving force for the Calvert County Minority Business Alliance. And whereas local governments, chambers and commerce and business associations throughout Maryland remain committed to working collaboratively to support black-owned enterprises. And whereas Calvert County encourages its citizens to support the black-owned businesses in their communities during the month of August and throughout the year and to pause to reflect on the numerous contributions of black entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs in our county. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of August 2025 be celebrated and recognized as National Black Business Month. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges every citizen to support black-owned businesses, given under our hands and seal this fifth day of August 25, signed by all five Commissioners.
So the next item on the agenda is an award, Department of Parks and Recreation, Thurman Gray Memorial Scholarship Educational Award. Director Brennan?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Brennan, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before we recognize our very deserved recipient of the scholarship award, I would like to acknowledge two of my coworkers, Datoria Jackson, Nola Formy-Daval. I encouraged them to come to the microphone. They resisted that. But they are critical in making the decisions on who receives this award. They go over many different documents. There's a litany of things that they consider, but they review videos, two letters of recommendation, acceptance letters to the next level of education and quite a few other things. So without them, this wouldn't be possible to recognize this rising star this morning. So they're here with me today. So I felt important to point them out as well. So before I call our recipient up, I'd like to tell you about this scholarship award. It's the Thurman Gray Memorial Scholarship Award for Parks and Recreation. So I was blessed enough not only to help create this scholarship many years ago, but I got to work with Mr. Gray. And the reason I want to point that out is he's a retired, was a retired postal worker that came to work for Parks and Recreation. But he was also a, a member of this community in so many ways. He supported many different outreach and community events. He was on the fair board. He was on the elections board. He did so many things through his church. And that is critical in what we use to consider who's going to win this award. Not only do they have to excel in the classroom, but they have to be a productive member of this community and give back to this community. So I'm convinced that our team made the right selection for who's receiving this award today. So in the interest of your time, I'm going to read one small paragraph from the letter we sent to this recipient and then I would like to call Ella Gibson and her family up to the microphone. Your commitment to academic excellence combined with your passion for environmental science has qualified you for this award. The scholarship committee recognized your exceptional talents, potential and positive impact you have demonstrated both in your academic pursuits and your community involvement, especially with your agricultural and wildlife research abilities. Receiving this scholarship not only acknowledges your past achievements, but also serves as a testament to your future potential. It reflects the belief that others have in your abilities and the confidence they have in your capacity to make a significant, significant contribution in your chosen field. As you embark on the next chapter of your educational journey, we encourage you to make the most of this scholarship. Embrace every opportunity it presents, both academically and beyond the classroom. So again, I'd like to congratulate Ella and ask her to join us at the front here with her family.
Hi, I'm Ella Gibson. I'm a graduating senior from Calvert High School and I am planning to attend West Virginia University to study in wildlife and fisheries. Right now, I'm at CSM studying for environmental science, but hopefully I like to transfer in.
And what made you choose West Virginia?
I think you know the answer, Todd.
We don't know the answer. We want to hear.
My, my dad attended. He studied horticulture. So I, we've always visited there and I've always liked it. I knew I wanted to go there by the age of 10. So, and I have extensively researched it and I think that the professor that I will be attending with is very good.
Good answer.
It's a good, it's a good school and from what I understand, the alumni is very strong there and that, do they have a good football team? I'm not really into sports. Do they? So, so, but at least everyone participates, unlike when my daughter went to Maryland and football wasn't. Congratulations.
So Ella, are you going to pursue any sports while you're there?
Uh, yes, I'm going to attend the club field hockey team there.
Good.
Good for you.
I am Susie Gibson and I am Ella's mom.
I'm Jamie Gibson, Ella's dad, West Virginia alum. And yes, she will go there, but she will get her mom's degree in fisheries and wildlife.
It's a good compromise. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Ms. Emily?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Emily Shreves, Constituent Services Specialist here for you today for appointments. Emily Shreve's Constituent Services Specialist, here for you today for appointments. Uh, for the first board, the Police Accountability Board, staff recommends that you appoint Susan Justice as chairperson, reappoint Brian Cedar and Leslie Parker, and appoint Anthony Green and James Johnson as members of the Police Accountability Board. Following this action, no vacancies would remain.
I move that we appoint Susan Justice as chairperson and reappoint Brian Cedar and Leslie Parker, and appoint Anthony Green and James Johnson as members of the Police Accountability Board.
Second. I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Second is for the Administrative Charging Committee. Staff recommends that you reappoint Edward Baylor and Stacy Stump to the Administrative Charging Committee, and there are two upcoming vacancies that will be filled by appointees of the Police Accountability Board as prescribed by state law.
I move that we reappoint Edward Baylor and Stacy Stump to, to the Administrating Charging Committee.
A motion in a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Final appointment for today is for the Police Accountability Trial Board. Staff recommends that you reappoint the Honorable Larry Lamson as the retired judge of the District Court or Circuit Court member of the trial board. Following this action, there will be two upcoming vacancies that will be filled by appointees of the Police Accountability Board as prescribed by state law.
I move that we reappoint the Honorable Larry Lamson as the retired judge of the District Court or Circuit Court member of the trial board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Emily. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Wilson Perrin, who chaired the Police Accountability Board in its infancy. It was quite a challenge, and so to be the first to create the structure and get the process in place is an additional challenge. So we want to thank Mr. Perrin for his service at the Police Accountability Board, and we're gonna miss him. Next item on the agenda is consent, we have several items under consent today. Item one, Department of Planning and Zoning Historic Preservation Tax Credit twenty-two five dash zero one, Hampton Column Repair. Item two, Department of Economic Development Small Business Development Center Memorandum of Understanding for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-six. Department of Technology Service State and Local Government Cybersecurity Program Grant. Calver Ca- item four, Calver County Sheriff's Office State Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-six Local Warrant Apprehension and Absconding Grant Program Award. Item five, the Department of Public Works Think Big Network Easement. Any objections to those items listed under consent today?
None. None. I move that we adopt and approve the consent agenda items. Second.
I have a motion in a second, and we approve those items listed under consent today. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business. Calver County Sheriff's Office, Calver County Board of Education, Calver County Public Schools, Additional School Resource Officers. Sheriff Cox.
Morning, have a morning question.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Sheriff asked me to read the, uh, the memo for you. Uh, background, currently there's fourteen Calver County Sheriff's Office, uh, Deputy Designers School Resource Officers. Each school resource officer is assigned, uh, into a group of elementary, middle, and high schools throughout the county to provide adequate coverage. School safety remains a high priority and critical responsibility, creating the need for additional law enforcement presence at each Calver County school. Calver County School Board currently funds four of those, uh, with the rest funded by the Calver County Sheriff's Office budget. The Calver County Board of Education currently reimburses us for those four, as I said, and the remaining ten are, are, uh, out of our budget. Staffing for each of these schools with a permanent school resource officer is a responsible necessity. The Calver County Sheriff's Office is committed to accomplishing this goal in systematic phases. To this end, the updated MOU with the, uh, Calver County Board of Education, uh, includes two additional school resource officers to be hired by the Calver County Sheriff's Office and reimbursed by the, uh, Calver County School Board of Education. This update will result in the school board funding six additional resource positions and the Calver County Sheriff's Office, the remaining ten, for a total of sixteen in the county. Fiscal impact for two thousand and twenty-six is two hundred and seven thousand, one sixty-seven and three cents to include one hundred and twenty-one, one seven, I'm sorry, one twenty-one, seven sixty-four in salaries, sixty thousand, eight eighty-two in benefits calculated at the point five-five rate, and twenty-four thousand, five twenty-one oh-three in additional associated deputy costs. Uh, new vehicles and vehicle add-on costs are not included at this time, we are gonna, uh, incorporate those in, in what we have. And the overall fiscal impact will be zero upon the FY twenty-six with reimbursement of, uh, an additional two oh seven, one sixty-seven oh-three from the school board for a total of six twenty-one, five oh one, oh nine. Sheriff respectfully requests the Calver County Board of Commissioners approve the addition of two new school resource officers in FY twenty-twenty-six, and that would consist of two new FTEs for deputy sheriffs and associated costs to be reimbursed by the Calver County Board of Education. That's it. Sure.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Uh, thank you, Colonel Payne. Does everybody know Ms. Laura Kent, she's our fiscal manager, uh, we had one introduced her, uh, she has a hard job, uh, and she, uh, one, she's right there with me alongside, and, uh, she's a real benefit to our office, but, uh, it's always been my goal to secure our schools, um, and having the deputies inside them, not to, just to secure the school, but mentoring our kids and our children, and, uh, hearing from the, some of the principals I've talked to, they really enjoy having the, uh, deputy there to handle situations that, uh, kind of takes a little off their plate as well, um, and getting to know the kids, I, I've talked to the SROs, we just finished a, a dare camp, uh, that was a week long at Wendy Hill, uh, with fifty kids, elementary school-age kids, and then, uh, just prior to that, we had our middle school-age camps, and it's, it's cool to see the deputies interacting with the kids and, uh, kind of mentoring our youth. And I think they're our future, our most important asset in our county, and I think that we should protect our schools and our kids at the same times, and that's why I'm asking for these two additional positions. It's my goal to have every, uh, a deputy at every school. Um, this, at this point, we got, uh, we got our high schools, middle schools, and we have twelve elementary schools that need to be covered, uh, which, a total of twenty-two schools, um, that, that are out there in our county, and that'll put us about six short being our elementary schools, so we'll have half of those covered the school year.
But you have offers to drop in once in a while for those schools that.
Correct, yes. And some of those have double campuses, and we kind of, they kind of do a dual role at that point, too. I mean, there's a lot that goes on in the school that, uh, it's, they're very busy, uh, a lot of folks think that they just, they do nothing, but, uh, hearing from them weekly, um, they do, uh, do a lot, and they have a big, huge role in our school system.
Well, I tell you, and you've brought up a, a whole lot that, that I've been watching, you guys have been so right in with all the kids, like I say, from the programs, elementary school, everything, and that officer's much more, just like you said, than just, just an officer people think, security. They're so part of that school, I mean, they're part of the school, you know, every day I'm down Pax, and I see the SRO down there. He's at the games, he's at everything, they all know him, you know, I mean, it's just, he's, he's part of, of the school, I mean, I really don't know how to say it, any, any, uh, he's so embraced as part of what they do, you know, like when you look back and say, you know, oh, remember Mr. and Mrs. Sun, just, he's so accepted, and the kids respect the officers so much, I mean, it's, um, it's, their role really, it's hard to define how much impact they have down there, and, um, it's gr- it's great to see the kids embrace it, too, because, you know, um, uh, I probably will get future law enforcement or EMTs, people that, you know, that want, want to give back, I mean, it's such a great example, and, and they truly care, they really care about the kids down there, but like I say, you, you brought up a lot, I see it with the, uh, the, uh, s- summer camp, sheriff's camp, and, um, I mean, you guys just doing a phenomenal job with that.
It's such a positive impact for our community and for the children, so many children don't have heroes to look up to, and they look up to all of you, and, and when you nurture those relationships, it makes it easier for some children who perhaps have something on their mind or, or whatever, to know that you all are there, so I totally endorse this, and I thank you all for all you do.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, it takes a special person, like Commissioner Hart said, to be a teacher, to be, uh, a bus driver, to be a SRO these days, and we vet our SROs, SROs, and we make sure that, you know, that person has it. We've had people that took the job and necessarily didn't, didn't like it, and we had to, you know, I don't want to put a person there that doesn't want to be there, in a sense, but.
Because you're right, it, it's, it's a different.
And we have a lot of those that are coaching, um, outside of the school hours, they're there, uh, which is cool to see, too, as well, building those relationships.
Absolutely.
Yes. If we continue to phase them in like this, we'll, we'll be at our goal before we know it.
Absolutely.
So, ready for motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that we approve the addition of two new school resource officers for FY twenty-twenty-six with the associated cost to be reimbursed by the Calver County Board of Education and Calver County Public Schools with taxpayer funds this board has provided them.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just, uh, closing, two Commissioners, I would like to say thank you to the, the school board and, uh, uh, facilitating this to happen, and just our prior school board to the new school board as well, they, they were in favor to, as well, so I just want to say thank you for them, too, so, for, for allowing this to happen.
It's always figuring out the money.
Yes, sir. You have a good week, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business, Office of the County Administrator Ethics Code Update, House Bill eight thirty-four. Ms. Emily?
Good morning, again, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Emily Shreve's Constituent Services Specialist, but today I'm here as the staff liaison to the Calver County Ethics Commission, presenting this item on their behalf today. Um, and if it pleases the Commissioners, I'll go ahead and read the memo. Thank you. Background, over the past several months, the Calver County Ethics Commission has come before the Board of County Commissioners in work sessions regarding the implementation of Chapter three seventy Laws of Maryland two thousand and twenty-four, or commonly referred to as House Bill eight thirty-four, which requires the Calver County Ethics Commission to publicly disclose recommendations to expel a commissioner and authorizes the governing body to remove county-elected officials for local and state conflict of interest provisions based on the Ethics Commission public recommendation. On July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at the Board of County Commissioner meeting, Ethics Commission conducted a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed ordinance, and the BOC, but, B OCC voted to close the record, and Ethics Commission would return no sooner than ten days for final adoption. Discussion, there was one comment received during the public hearing, and no comments received electronically or by mail during the advertisement period. Following the public record closing, the Ethics Commission recommends chapter, amending Chapter forty-one of the Calver County Code of Ordinances to implement Chapter three seventy Laws of Maryland two thousand and twenty-four. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion and recommendation, the Ethics Commission requests that the B OCC review, and if appropriate, adopt and enact the ordinance as submitted to implement Chapter three seventy Laws of Maryland two thousand and twenty-four. Coordination with Office of the County Attorney.
Thank you. Discussion?
I move that we adopt and enact the ordinance as submitted to implement Chapter three seven oh Laws of Maryland two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is convene as the Board of Health. Uh, we're only two minutes early. Department of Community Resources requests to convene as the Board of Health. Is there a motion?
I move to recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and convene a meeting as the Calver County Board of Health.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, that we, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Director Moreland. Dr. Moreland.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources, and I'm here with Dr. Tanise Amora. Um, and this is a follow-up presentation to the May presentation. As you remember, there were, um, a number of questions that came up with regards to opioids, but specific. And so, um, we have another presentation we'll be doing following this one, which will, um, discuss diabetes and weight management medications, that was.
United States, and this brings a total, a number of deaths from opioid in the country to nearly a million, it's actually about eight hundred thousand, but that's quite a lot of people suffering and, and dying from opioid overdose. In Maryland, we also observed the same, um, information or the same trends. Opioid-related overdose deaths in Maryland also started to rise from nineteen ninety-nine, and it peaked around twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, when the total number of deaths were twenty-five hundred annually. Uh, and so concurrently, those numbers are starting to drop, um, however, we have to remember that the impact remains profound. Next slide. So what you see here is a chart that details the drug overdose deaths in Maryland from July two thousand and twenty-four through June two thousand and twenty-five, and during this period, there's a total number of one thousand, three hundred and sixty deaths from drug overdose, and approximately one thousand, ninety-seven or eighty-point-six percent of those were from fentanyl deaths. And so you'll notice that, that the sum of the deaths associated with each substance here exceeds the total number of reported drug overdose deaths, and so what that indicates is that some of the fatalities were from having multiple drugs on board, um, in those people, or individuals. So on the next slide, so this slide presents the number of fatal opioid-related overdose deaths in the county annually from two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and twenty-three, and it's categorized by opioid substance. The purple line that you see indicates the total number of opioid-related deaths per year, and the light purple line represents the deaths specifically attributable to fentanyl. And heroin, um, was a problem earlier during this period, so the overdose deaths from heroin is shown in red, and, um, since two thousand and seventeen, that number really has fallen off, and fentanyl emerged as the most, most common cause of opioid-related deaths in the county. So, um, what's not shown here are the deaths from prescription opioids, so those are much lower in number, and they're actually suppressed on this graph, but they do occur. And so overall, you can, as you can see here, the trends show a general decrease in opioid-related deaths since two thousand and nineteen in our county.
But do you, do you find, oh, I, do you find that, that if you put the fentanyl and that together, though, that it exceeds? Because, um, you, you know, the, I'm assuming that the fentanyl's found mostly just in the opiates, correct, and like the heroin and the cocaine, not so much in everything else?
Yeah, oh, let me, let me back up, so on this graph, the purple line counts all the opioids, so it has the fentanyl plus heroin plus others that are not named there.
Oh, so that's all in one?
That's all in one, the top, and then the, the lines that are, um, lower, like the light purple one, is just from fentanyl, and that's both from prescription fentanyl, which are very low, really, and the illicit.
So they prescribe fentanyl?
So, fentanyl is actually used in the intensive care unit as a sedative and for pain, it's for people. Who are intubated, um, and that's what makes them comfortable and allows them to stay, you know, the breathing tube in there.
No kidding, I didn't know that, I mean, all, all you just hear is, you know, how deadly that drug is, that, that even to touch it, I was told.
Um, yes.
Can be fatal.
Can be fatal, but now there's also the illegally-made fentanyl, which are not made by pharmaceutical companies, but they're made by clandestine labs, um, they're the ones that are sold on the streets, they could look like a pill, and it could look like a prescription pill, so a, a person may not necessarily understand that it's not a prescription pill they're getting. The other risk with that is that it may be tainted or laced with other items, um, which could be.
There's no way to know.
There's not a way to know, this one.
And is it, is it just delivered in, like, the, the pills and the heroin and that, or is it, are you finding it, I, I don't know a lot about fentanyl, to be quite honest, but I just hear that all the time in what I. time and what a problem that is. I mean, if, how would these kids know?
Oh, actually, I have a few slides that are following that will show images of this and I'm hoping that those could be remembered by by the public as well.
So it could be in any of this?
Go ahead.
Before you, before you move on, so the heroin, it stops at 2017.
2017.
There were 17 deaths, but there still are some deaths.
There are some deaths that are low and that's probably what you see in the gray area. So because the numbers are very low, the the statisticians don't publish them there. They they just suppress them and they kind of put them in that gray area.
But there's a 10 in 2019, so we had 10 deaths in 2019. So I'm assuming that those years where there's nothing, it was less than 10?
Less than 10.
So they consider that insignificant?
Um, from statistics point of view, but I mean, every person who dies from this is important, but so, but but that's just how it's represented mathematically.
So the fentanyl and the other drugs is taking the place of heroin?
It, that's what it appears. And this trend is actually not unique to Calver County. This is, these are the trends throughout the state.
And is that because of price, availability, or what?
Very good question. I don't, I mean, it's probably, it's availability and sometimes there are substances that are in in the more popular by, you know, it's more popularly consumed by the users or the people who use them. So it's really a multifactorial combination of multiple things, including availability. The next slide. So this is just a slide that demonstrates that, you know, these are prescription drugs and prescription medications that benefit people who have chronic pain or chronic acute pain or prescribed by doctors, you know, if the medication that's used are not as effective. But, and I'll just name a few of these prescription opioids. Codeine, Oxycodone, which is Oxycontin by trade, Hydrocodone or Vicodin or Lartab by trade name. The other ones are morphine and fentanyl. So morphine is actually a drug that's given in an emergency room and it's used to treat persons who are suffering from a heart attack, from the pain of a heart attack. And I just mentioned what the, you know, legal fentanyl has uses in the intensive care unit.
Are you finding a change in the way pain medication is delivered these days where it was just doled out like candy? Are you finding that it's a lot more restrictive than what it used to be?
That's actually true. That observation has been made. So, and I would attribute it to the efforts of the state. There was a push to educate providers about responsible prescribing of these drugs because although they are beneficial, they can be addictive and they can be misused. And so there has been a decrease in the, in, I would call it more responsible prescribing by clinicians of these medications. Next, next slide. Now, but then there are illicit opioids and number one, where heroin was the illicit opioid that's been present for and and used heavily in the past until recently, when non-pharmaceutical fentanyl became more popular. So as I mentioned earlier, it might look like a prescription pill, but it might look like a powdery substance similar to what heroin looks like. But the image there on the right lower aspect of the the slide is sort of the amount of illicit or powdered form fentanyl that can actually kill a person. So that it's so potent that that amount would be sufficient to cause a fatality in a regular-sized person, which kind of makes us really wonder, you know, especially if these are in homes where there could be kids in their area, so it's potential.
Think about law enforcement when they're, when they're going to try to do their job and, I mean, it is, I mean, how do you see that? You know, and it could be on anything. Like I said, that's why I've heard just just to touch it and it's horrible.
Yeah, yes. So, and just to give you a background, fentanyl is 100 times more potent than morphine and it's 50 times more potent than heroin. So next slide. I included this slide. It's really to, to help our, the public also know a little bit about what just to look for, you know, for opioid overdose. So an affected person, you know, who may be suffering from an overdose will exhibit some of these symptoms. They may have difficulty staying awake. They may appear drowsy or they may even be unresponsive. And sometimes, and other times, they will also have other symptoms such as slow or labored breathing. Pinpoint pupils, which is the image on the right there. So the pinpoint pupil is at the bottom, small, and then it's compared to a normal-sized pupil on the top. And then they may have a stopped heartbeat or slow heartbeat. So their heart could stop, they they'll stop breathing. And then the other things are they could have a gurgling sound or like they may even sound like they're just snoring. And so those are all signs that could indicate that, all of it, you know, they, most of it would have to be present in the person who may be suffering from an overdose. Next slide. So what is an overdose? What's actually happening in an overdose? Well, it occurs when the toxic amount of opioid overwhelms the body's ability to handle it. And we also call this opioid poisoning. And this slide outlines the progression that leads to an overdose death. So within minutes or hours after taking the substance, an opioid particle, the opioid particles bind to very specific receptors in the brain and the effect of that really is the central nervous system undergoes respiratory depression. I guess in in more common terms, that means that the, when there's too much opioid in the system, a person's drive to breathe actually stops. And can you imagine that? It's nothing. It's the opioid that's doing that. And so this leads to lack of oxygen in the blood and then it causes failure of organs and then eventually it leads to comatose, the comatose state and death. Next slide. And so how, then what is the treatment for that? Naloxone. Naloxone is a very important emergency medication that can be used or that is currently used to treat the life-threatening effects of an opioid overdose. And naloxone is also commonly unknown as Narcan, which is the trade name. And its primary function is to rapidly reverse the overdose effects. And that's, you know, it restore, once it's administered to a person who's suffering from an overdose, their breathing gets restored, their, you know, their oxygenation gets restored and they wake up essentially. So currently, there are two FDA forms of this medication. One is in an injection form that can be administered through an auto-injector device. That's a little tougher to use. So currently, there is the simpler intranasal, or that's the nasal spray form of the the drug or the medication. And and it's also available over the counter, not necessarily without, with a prescription. And it's easy to use and it can be administered by almost anyone as long as they're trained on it. And it's, it's quite easy to use. Next slide. I include this slide basically to help show how naloxone works. So you see the images on the right side of the slide. The top image shows an overdose scenario where the opioid substance attaches to numerous opioid receptors in the brain, causing a person to stop breathing. So as soon as naloxone is administered, within a few minutes, then it quickly binds the opioid receptors and competes with the opioid, actually, and it blocks the opioid's effect. And so that action is enough to restore a person's breathing. Now however, it's important to know that naloxone action is only short-lived, so it lasts 30 minutes to two hours. And sometime, and this is why a kit usually has two doses because and a person suffering from an overdose may actually go back into the non-breathing state, you know, after the naloxone wears off, so they might need a second dose. And I would say the the learning from this is that if they ever have to use, if a person has to use naloxone, they really should be going to an emergency room for further evaluation and treatment. And I think that also then facilitates their connection with, you know, treatment of their opioid use disorder in the longer term.
You guys issue out Narcan, correct?
Yes, yes.
Are you finding it more or less? I mean, are we seeing this trend get any better? I mean, I remember when it first happened, obviously, you know, but now that we're a few years into this, are you still issuing out as much as you used to?
We are continuing to push naloxone kits or Narcan kits.
But I mean, has the demand for the kits gone down any at all?
Actually, no, because we don't, a person, so when it's distributed, we don't ask who or why. And so it could be a family member with a, a family member of a person who's using the drugs or using the opioid. It could be a person who just wants to be able to help in case they do see this out.
Well, typically, you don't have that around the house unless you know there's a problem. I mean, you you know what I mean? That's not like, you know, bread, milk, eggs and Narcan. I mean, so, I mean, did, any ideas on the numbers that were, that you're handing out a year?
Um, the next, the subsequent slides will have those.
Does that have a shelf life on it?
Depends on the, if it, yes, yes, Commissioner Cox, so two years is the shelf life on the trade, the trade Narcan and then the generic naloxone is a year.
And there are other places they can get it besides the health department, right?
That, that's correct. So pharmacies also have, so I'm kind of deviating from this one, but yes, there are multiple ways to get the Narcan and I'll talk about. Um, it's over the counter. It's over the counter, but it's also $44 a dose or a dose, basically. However, it's also available through pharmacies, but we've learned, it's, we, as in the state has learned that there's a better way and actually a probably more efficient way to distribute this out. And it's the, and it's through the opioid response program that I'll talk about here. So the state, the Maryland has implemented really a statewide overdose response program and the aim of this is two, two-part. So it's to educate people about the signs and symptoms of an opioid overdose and then to distribute Narcan and teach the public, teach as many people who are at risk, their family members, or teach the public how to administer the intranasal Narcan. And like I said, the two components are overdose education and training. So the, in, the importance of this is that it educates individuals on how to recognize the signs of an overdose and how to give naloxone before a paramedic arrives. And the reason for that is, you know, time is of the essence when there's an opioid overdose and the earlier Narcan is administered, the more likely a person may survive from that, from that overdose. The second component is Narcan distribution. So this component ensures the broad access to Narcan in the timely administration of this medication. So we have community-based opioid response programs that have consistently been proven effective. The advantages of this type of a program is that they've increased individuals' knowledge and self-confidence in responding to overdoses. They are cost-effective, the cost of, in it, it's against a life, so they are definitely cost-effective. And they have improved heightened community awareness about overdose and the result of this program really is that it saves lives and reduces the number of deaths from opioid overdose. And if you, we go over to the next slide here, or just, this one just talks a little bit more about our health department's opioid response program. So we operate under the the guidance and support of the Maryland Department of Health Overdose Response Program and we align with the same principles, components that the the state program has. And the basis and the foundation are education, so opioid overdose education, as well as distribution of Narcan. Our overdose prevention team runs this program and they are actively engaged in community outreach. And what they do is they provide education to individuals and then distribute, distribute Narcan kits to the same individuals at various events, including health fairs. And currently, we are also, we've been invited by numerous organizations such as the Calver County Public Schools, various employers, work sites, the detention center, for us to offer overdose training and Narcan kit distribution. And on the right, you can see a photo of what a Narcan kit looks like. So it has two nasal sprays. There is information in there that shows or details the signs and symptoms of an overdose because, you know, these are really made for the layperson and they may not necessarily know that. And so they have a little cheat sheet that says, see, these are the signs of an overdose. And then there are numbers of Calvert Mobile Crisis Unit or our crisis team in there in case they need help. And then there's also the number of the Maryland Poison Control if they need guidance. Next slide. So the slide here shows the number of Narcan kits that are distributed by the overdose response program here at the health department for fiscal year 2025. And as you can see, the number there is very small, but it's over 3,900 naloxone kits have been distributed every year and this is slightly higher than in the years before.
Well, it looks like so far this year, it's over 2,000 already. And you're saying there's other places to get Narcan besides just here? I mean, that's disturbing.
So this is, actually, I would say this is the, this distributes most of the Narcan. It's also available through the pharmacy, through a pharmacist, but we've learned that that the distribution in that mechanism or that channel is is not as large.
But, but 2,000, and I know we're a little bit past six months in the year and you're probably trending to hit the same 3,900 again with, with that, but my goodness, I mean, that is, that's a lot.
So these are actually what are distributed. They are not what are used by a victim or a patient. So those numbers are not known. The state is actually being collected by the state, but it's a difficult data to obtain because you, I mean, if a person is undergoing a crisis and having to give themselves naloxone, the last thing on their mind is to go and report that they used this one. So.
When that happens, is that typically a hospital visit to follow or will they just, say they, say, say they know they have that problem at the house and they issue the Narcan, do they just like let the person just go back to normal or what have you, or is that a trip to the hospital?
So it depends on who responded to them. The E, if it's EMS or emergency medical.
Say, say, say it's the parent or what have you or a significant other.
They may not necessarily know.
So if there is a trip to the hospital, does that hospital, does hospitals share that data with you guys to try to confirm how many incidents?
So it's, it'll be hidden, it'll be a difficult number to, to obtain.
Nobody's tracking.
Yeah, it's not, the, the state is attempting to track it, but they are, we, we know that it's an underestimate of what, what is actually used.
I, I would assume that, that if somebody has it at the house, they obviously have it there because they believe that they would need to use it. So with almost 4,000 going out a year, we're only 93,000 people here. That's a significant number.
It really, I think the only legitimate numbers that you're going to get right now are fatal overdose numbers. You're not going to get any other strong data that says where our problem's going. Are we improving? Are we getting better? The only, the only way you're going to have to measure that is deaths.
It's being disguised now because of the Narcan.
Correct, right. That Commissioner Allen's correct in that. That's how we are measuring our success. So these are, this, this is one of the many interventions and, you know, interventions that are being implemented by the states through the health departments to try to, you know, contain the epidemic. And that, that is the number. The measure is how many deaths have we prevented or how many deaths?
Quick, no, quick math, I mean, you're looking at probably $400,000 in, in Narcan alone to that point this year that's been distributed, but we don't know how many lives it saved or anything else. It's immeasurable. It's unfortunate.
And I really thought, you know, I remember when drug court first got introduced and we started seeing all this stuff. I really thought that, you know, maybe there was a generation that didn't know, you know, that they broke a leg in sports or whatever and they got on some type of, but there's no mystery out there now. I mean, from all the social media stuff out there, the movies, the literature, the, every kid knows about it. I'm just blown away how this number isn't darn near zero. I mean.
Society, man.
I, I, I just, I'm just.
Yeah, because of Narcan, they can keep you.
I'm just blown away.
And, and that's what concerns me is that when a young person says, well, we have Narcan out there to use, let me try.
I'm good.
Because I have something to.
That's petrifying.
Get me back.
That is petrifying.
I can almost imagine kids going out and saying who has Narcan.
Yeah. For where they, yeah. Because if you talk to EMS crews, they'll go to the same house half a dozen times a year.
And they're not distributing just one or two, sometimes it's three, four, five, six, seven or eight doses of Narcan.
Right, so.
At each location, so.
Right. I do want to say that Narcan is only effective against opioid. You know, it doesn't have any effect on any other drugs of addiction. Fentanyl is an opioid.
Oh, okay. But they do use it for other things.
So.
They use Narcan for other things other than drug overdose.
They do, but not, not, but not for.
What can you use it for?
Yeah.
Heart patients.
Oh, oh.
If you're unconscious, they'll use it to bring you back.
So some of that could be somebody has.
They don't track that.
Oh, so that, oh.
Oh, the, yeah, these are only for in the streets. I mean, Narcan is used in the hospital. It is, it's sort of the, in the same way.
Could some of this be for heart patients?
Yes.
So, so Narcan is used as an antidote when, you know, like if I were a doctor treating a patient in an ICU and I see that my patient is over-sedated and they're not waking up, it's probably something, that is one of those drugs and medications that would be administered to that person.
Patients out, then we use it to bring them back.
Right. And, and the thing is, when Narcan is used, they actually probably go through kind of a withdrawal. So it's not a pleasant, it's not a pleasant experience to, to have
Emergency room people tell me how the person gets violent afterwards from coming out of the drug-induced thing.
Correct. And, you know, hopefully that they remember that, not maybe a, a sign that, you know, they're gonna wanna help. They wanna.
I don't think so. I think if you, if you're dead and they bring you back and you're mad that they brought you back, I, I, I don't, you know what I mean? It's, um, it's a deeper, deeper problem than that, you know? I mean, where most people that not under influence that stuff would, that had a near-death experience would be, boy, a whole new outlook on life. Yeah.
But not always.
Okay. Now, we'll go into the next slide. So this is actually the slide that I would like to highlight. And it illustrates the year-over-year percentage change in the total overdose deaths in Calvert County. So from 2015 through 2024. And it shows that the total number of fatal opioid overdose deaths have decreased significantly, starting in 2020. And that in 2024, you know, we've seen the largest decrease in, you know, percentage-wise so far. And the reason for this is multifactorial. And if we go to the next page, and I think these really are the factors that have contributed to that decrease. That same trend has been going on, has also been observed throughout the state in, in the other jurisdictions. And it, one significant factor are the prevention efforts of the overdose response program for the state as well as locally. And I'd, I would also give credit to our first responders who are, who are trained to administer naloxone. So before 2011, they were, you know, that's something that they didn't do out in the field. But now our first responders can do this comfortably and confidently in the field. So that includes our law enforcement officers, our EMTs, firefighters, and the mobile crisis team.
So I bet, I bet if you look back at 2018, that's when Narcan became more readily available. It's not less people using drugs. It's the Narcan became more accessible. So everybody's got it in their house. The drug dealers have it, give it out to their customers. That's what changed.
So, um, yeah, it's difficult to say.
But I'm not a doctor.
Okay, the, um, we'll have to look at the data.
How diabolical is that to sell somebody drugs and go, hey, if this goes bad, here, yeah, take this so you don't die. And that's a whole nother discussion there of where the legal system comes in in this state and the judicial system on, you know, especially with fentanyl. Somebody's deliberately delivering that product, how are you not up for attempted murder? I mean, dude, that's where that product goes. I mean, you, you see even in the things, it's just, just a touch, tiny piece, it can kill somebody. It's not a recreational thing. It's not, I mean, and like you said, just, and we're one small county, just think of the, the money. You know, can you imagine what, uh, larger jurisdictions?
If I think back to your original presentation, we were higher than anybody else. That's why you're back again today.
So.
What we talked about, they're probably in more sentiment because they probably keep better track than other counties throughout the state of Maryland.
That's also possibly true. Although, I mean, there was a bump, but there's a lot of effort from multiple parties here. At the health department, I would say the outpatient mental health clinics and behavioral health at the health department plays a major role. It's real, it is a chronic illness and it takes multiple aspects and multiple interventions to get a better control of them. And the first step is saving their life. And then once their life is saved, we're hoping that they, with harm reduction, you know, my harm reduction team works with the folks who are using and, and talks to them and convince, tries to convince them to get treatment. And once they're ready for treatment, they're linked to care and they're linked to the, the mental health provider, a substance use disorder provider.
But you just said it, to try to convince them to get treatment with like an addict. I mean, an addict goes through so many, no matter what it is, so many different phases. You know, they always say, you say you have to hit rock bottom. Yeah, I don't know that that's the type of drug that you hit rock bottom. I don't, from everything I've been told by people in that field is that it's not like the old days with something where they hit rock bottom and then they gotta get better. There, there's, that, that desire's never gonna happen.
But did you see the chart and how high up deaths from alcohol is, as well, above other opioids? That's amazing.
Yes, yes. So, that's, and, and alcohol is.
But where you have to convince them, it's a shame the state doesn't have something in place. You overdose. It's a shame there's not a program that you instantly go into where the professionals work with that because parents and loved ones are overwhelmed. They don't, they're, they're not equipped. No person, I'm not equipped, you're not, we're not equipped to handle the, the power that I, from what I've told, that opiates are over anything we've ever seen.
Yeah.
To include the psychological aspects. And you know, if a person chooses that way of life, it's not if they overdose, it's when they overdose.
Yeah.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, it's not if. You're right. When they don't have any Narcan around.
And, you know, the families and, and, you know, there's so many resources that they have to offer now, particularly crisis management teams that, that goes to these residents when they had those overdoses and, and they, then the deputies, you know, have, have those tools in their belt. They were never there before.
So at the end of the day, you're saying that our rates are higher because we do a better job of tracking.
Actually, no, sir. So.
That's all we're trying to figure out is why our rates are so high.
So I think there's also an issue with numbers there. So our numbers are small, so smaller differences look like higher. I think that that's part of it. Yeah. So it's sort of like in the math. Yeah. And, but, but currently, that was at one point, but currently the reduction rates are actually better than some of, they're, they're larger. So you've seen a, a great reduction in there. And I really just wanna recognize the teams at the health department, the EMTs and our first responders, because they're all contributing to that. And I would say the harm reduction team also contributes to that because they distribute Narcan to the people who are at most risk for these overdose, overdoses. And when they do use that and they're ready to get treatment, then my harm reduction team members link them to care. And.
If they wanna get help.
If they were to get help.
If they want to get help.
If they want to get help. But if it's readily available, they're more likely to get help. If it's, if they are not aware of it, they may not necessarily get help.
That's important.
But, but you're talking about an addict wanting to help, correct?
Correct.
That doesn't happen though. I mean, I'm not saying, well, remember, it happens, but, but, but that's where I'm seeing that, that rock bottom piece from talking to some pharmacists that I know and thing, and things like that, or that, that this is different that, because I said the same thing. I'm from the old school, you know, somebody's addicted to alcohol or whatever, you know, you dry them out, they gotta hit rock bottom. But, but they said they're unable to hit that with this, that it's so powerful, that it's so overwhelming. And, and, and I don't know this, I'm just telling, just paraphrasing what I have been told. I mean, you're the, the health professional, but I'm told that it's not that simple. That, that, and if there's no mechanism to force them to get help, a lot of times you just have the reoccurring thing over and over and over and.
And I, I'm certain that these numbers are not one hundred percent indicative of addicts. It's probably included in there are kids who tried it for the first time.
Accidental.
Yeah.
I would hope, I mean, I would hope that it's not.
That certainly has got to be part of the numbers.
Yeah. And then also, that's correct, ma'am. And then there are also the people who are prescribed, prescribed, prescription opioids because of a legitimate reason and they could overdose there too. I just don't have the breakdown. That number is actually not quite available, you know, with, with the breakdown.
So is the average age still thirty to forty? And that?
Twenty-five to forty.
Twenty-five to forty then?
So, twenty-five to forty. And so I would like to close and say that, you know, I mean, the trends that you saw are positive for the county. And they're highly encouraging. And I, I would look at the death rate or the number of deaths as the measure, not the number of Narcan that we're distributing out. Because those, you know, that is actually the mechanism or the, the intervention that we're giving out to try to save lives. But if you look at it from the number of deaths point of view, there is a reduction of that, fifty-six percent reduction just in the last year. And so, again, I wanna recognize the teams that are all contributing to those lower numbers. However, we do need continued investment because this is a chronic condition. And these programs need to continue, continue to need support if we are to even lower those deaths down the road and, you know, drive them closer to zero. So that's really all that I have. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So I do have one for the people listening out there today. And we're talking about kids and pills. When, when you lose a loved one and you have a lot of medication in the house, they can bring that to the health department, correct?
We can work with them. There's sort of like a national take-back day that, that occurs every year. I'm just kinda escaping.
There's a drop box.
Yeah, the sheriff's office has a drop box and you can do that at any time.
So I just want people to hear that.
And I would recommend that rather than waiting.
State police, I want to.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Um, all of your presentations have been really, really informative for us and for the public. So thank you very much for taking the time.
You're welcome. Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn the meeting on the Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene with the board of county commissioners.
Second.
A motion. The second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion curbs. So the next item on the agenda is work session with Department of Public Safety, Calvert County Animal Ordinance Revision. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Deputy Coleman, Deputy Director of Animal Services. So background is the Department of Public Safety Animal Control is moving forward with proposed changes to Chapter Seven of the Calvert County Code pertaining to animals. The goal of this review is to align the ordinance with current animal welfare standards, increase accountability for both pet owners and animal-related businesses, plus streamline enforcement and administrative processes. The last significant update to Chapter Seven was enacted in March of two thousand and eight, which is making this a timely and necessary revision to reflect modern best practices and community needs. Today's discussion serves as a follow-up to directives issued during the April eighth work session. And included in this discussion are amendments made to the proposed animal ordinance specifically addressing the distinctions between commercial and residential animal licensing, as well as the approach to the emergency preparedness plan requirement. And we would request that the Board of County Commissioners provide feedback on these changes and if appropriate, authorize staff to advertise for public hearing to accept public comments regarding the adoption of the new ordinance. And this was done in coordination with the county attorney's office. This slide is basically to address some questions from last time. So we do define a difference between agricultural and domestic animals. So we do see that there is farmers and they have very different needs than those that have pets that you would tend to see on a farm, but we're having a lot of farmettes and, and whatnot. So we're seeing more domesticated livestock. So this is addressed, it's in the terminology. So we do see the distinction and the different needs of them. The animal fancier license, this was last time, kind of lumped in with the commercial section of licensing. So I've completely separated it out into its own separate section. It does not have the same standards as commercial licensing, such as the inspections and whatnot. So this one, like I said, its own section now, it's pretty much there to say for responsible pet owners, it, it streamlines the process for them as well. So if they're, they're breaching that number of, of animals, having the fancier license can really be beneficial to streamline licensing their pet and in the end be a money saver for them.
Is it one of those licenses that has to be renewed or is it a one-time deal?
They're annually.
Annually, okay.
And that's what the licenses are now.
Is it gonna be hard to keep track of this? Is this adding more work to you?
We, we have a software system that, that keeps track of it. So basically, if, if I needed an animal fancier license, you type in my name into the software that we have and it'll pop up automatically under the licensing section.
Okay, thank you.
Are the owners notified whenever renewal needs to take place?
Sorry, what's that?
Are the owners notified whenever renewal needs to take place?
The, I would like to work on that. We don't currently have that in place, but I know that there's some softwares that I would like to in the future as we grow as animal services where they do have reminder services. And part of that streamlining is to eventually we could have this all be online so people don't even have to leave their house for it. And they would send out reminders as well. That's, that's the future goals.
Okay.
But currently they have to come to the shelter to get their license?
They do, yes.
Does this apply to farms?
So I'll get to that in the next slide, which I'll just go to now.
Let me ask you something. How close are you to having that up and running? Or is it a, is it a matter of time and money to buy the program?
It would be time and money and working with TS. There, there's different companies that are starting to come out with these, these programs for the online licensing. So there's a lot of new companies coming out. So I think it'd also be working with TS to see which ones they would approve. So we do, we can kind of just build out the system, but I would like to start working on that as soon as we have what our different licensing is going to be, to really put that at the, the top of the list for things to accomplish. So we talked last time and I did come up with some exemptions for the fancier license. I did reach out to the president of the Professional Animal Workers of Maryland. And this has been not just our county where this question has been posed, is about what about farmers and hunting dogs. And it's actually kind of hindered some other jurisdictions from moving forward with the fancier license. Others have moved forward, but have said that has been a problem. So I'm hoping that this can kind of bridge that gap and maybe for other counties, they can mimic it if, if approved. But to have an exemption for hunting dogs, so they wouldn't count towards the number for your fancier license. The only thing is they, they just need to be actively used for hunting. Same with farm dogs. If you, you have a active dog, you live on agricultural property, you have a, a herding dog or a guardian dog, they're actively being used for it, they won't count towards that number for the fancier license.
So if I took my beetles out for a afternoon hunt, that was considered hunting dog?
If you wanna attest to it, that's what they're used for, then yeah, we're not gonna nitpick and say they have to be used X amount of times. If you're doing your field trials with them, you take them out hunting, you're an active hunter, then.
So this applies to just dogs, cats, and rabbits?
Um, well, it, it applies to, to dogs. So the way the new ordinance is being written as well is working cats, so like your barn cats that are on agricultural prop, properties don't require to have a county license anyways.
Okay, okay. So, so, and I'm sorry, because I'm just reading there and it puts it up. So if I'm, if I'm a farmer, because, you know, these animals are, they're like the crew. I mean, they, they're working. What do I have to get this special license for?
So you don't get a license if they're, so they're not part of the animal fancier license. If you can attest that they are being actively used for farming purposes or for hunting purposes.
Because I mean, like say, a cat could just be keeping rodents down and things like that. I mean, so, so that's, so, so basically, I mean, are farms kind of exempt?
In a sense, yeah. If somebody, if somebody has a farm and they still elect to keep twelve dogs, just as personal pets, like little toy poodles, those would, those would be towards the fancier license. So these are dogs that are actively being used for hunting or farming purposes. Do not go towards that number to meet that threshold. And like I said, the, the cats, the, if you're on an agriculturally assessed property, you have community cats or, or barn cats, they don't need licenses.
Okay, rabbits, no?
Rabbits, they're in there if they're.
Because I saw you listed it, is why I asked.
So that's where we have the distinction in the terminology. We have our domestic and we have our agricultural. So if you have rabbits for the purpose of meat, they're gonna, they're gonna fall into that agricultural. If you have a house full of rabbits that are pets, then that falls into the, the fancier category. So, so that's the distinction is we do outline agriculture versus. So, that's the distinction, is we do outline agriculture versus pet. And rabbits fall into either category depending on what you have them for.
And this one-time exemption, is that a one-time form I fill out once a year? Or do I have to fill it out every year, because, you know, I'm reading the last three sentences of this here?
The animal fancier license is good for a year?
No, I'm talking about the exemption now.
Yeah.
So, I have an exemption with six dogs. Do I have to fill that out every year?
Yes, as the way it is now, but a lot of things we have in our online database, and we are building it. I think we could easily be something that we just revisit, check the boxes, add or make changes to.
Well, could the person fill out the form the one time, and as long as they have no changes, no need to go back and fill it out again? I mean, if I'm a farm today and I'm a farm 10 years from now, it just seems a lot of paperwork on both sides to make, you know, the farmer or what have you. And you got, you know what I mean?
Well, that's where it's like we have it, our database, we scan everything into it, and it's very easy to use and find things. So, honestly, for some cases, it could just be a phone call, and we can just update it or email, just to make sure things that are.
And we're not going to find these people, right?
It's very rare that we get into those situations. It's very far and few.
Have to be another issue more than usually.
Yeah.
I mean, I just was saying, the guy's working his farm, it's hard enough as it is, and he forgets to update the form that he has 12 cats running around or whatever.
Far, and like you said, it's usually, there's a combination of other issues going on, but it's very far and few.
And you know I love animals, don't get me wrong, but I mean, I don't want to make people, you know what I mean?
If they got caught up for, like, dog fighting or something like that.
Yeah, then that's a change, yeah.
So, usually, we're there for something, and that kind of puts your foot in the door. And then you do check for those items, but we don't go door-to-door knocking and just asking where your.
It sounds like we just want to streamline this process as much as we possibly can.
Yes.
If you can get it online, that'd be great.
That is in my, that is hopes and dreams we have talked about multiple times. I think it'd make everybody's job easier, even that.
To protect, pay it when it's easier, easier it is.
And we moved on to a lot of online forms to submit complaints, and we are seeing that people prefer that method over phone calls. So, we are seeing that as we are adding things online, it's being used pretty regularly. So, I think we would have some good success with being able to make that happen. So, commercial licenses, just to recap, as you can see, the animal fancier is no longer in there, so it's going to be for those businesses. And then also, we've added in for nonprofit rescues. And just to reiterate, there is no license fee for them, because we do understand the work that they're doing is, they're nonprofit. So, they're doing this out of the goodness of their heart and through donations that they collect. So, there would be no fee for the rescues. And then our Emergency Preparedness Plan. So, that does not fall under the commercial, I mean, the animal fancier licensing. And alls we would ask for is at least two points of contact for a business. Once again, it goes into our software. So, if something happens at a kennel, you can easily pull up two phone numbers to give them a call. And when they are doing their annual license, just a brief outline to make sure you at least know what your minimum staffing plan is or have some point of contact that can provide owner information for the animals if they do come into our care to just streamline those. So, it doesn't have to be anything.
You're just trying to trigger them to at least think about it.
Yep, and we have a basic one at the shelter. We know what our minimum staffing power is and what to do in crisis mode. So, that's really all it is, is everybody just to have that forethought and just two points of contact for us to be able to reach somebody. And this was added in working with the county attorney's office. There is a new law that is going to go into effect January of 2027 in Maryland in regards to the inhumane confinement of roosters. So, it was requested, it's put in here. We have kind of run into, we did have a cockfighting case here, kind of ran into this as well. And basically, it's just saying that roosters cannot be confined in a way that hinders them from doing normal animal behaviors or restricts their movement.
You're roosters.
Yeah, roosters.
That's a state law that's going to go into effect, so you're just being prepared for that.
Yes, and we do have roosters at the shelter if anybody would like some. Okay, that was my public service announcement. So, any questions?
Most we hear about roosters is noise in neighborhoods.
Yep, that would be correct.
And you don't need a rooster to get eggs, just for the record?
I have chickens and no roosters and plenty of eggs, so I can attest to that.
Only if you want to hatch them, then you might need a rooster.
Yes.
And just, you know, plug, we're talking about animal shelter. It's a fantastic place. If folks have never been there, it is a fantastic place. I mean, and because we said this morning, we have everything there right now, cats and dogs and chickens and.
We just had hermit crabs.
How in the world did you get a hermit crab?
Cruelty case.
It is a.
So, what can the public do to support you? Drop in and spend time with animals, so on and so forth?
What we need most, I think, is just getting the word out. We really appreciate donations, whether it's treats or wet food, things that just lets us go a little above and beyond. Always looking for fosters, volunteers. We have volunteers that just come and do laundry all day. So, there is stuff. They, there's no shortage of it, but they will be in there with their headphones on, just.
Washing laundry.
Doing laundry.
It's.
There's some good people in this county. There really is. I mean, from Smile to the museums, to all the Meals on Wheels, to, I mean, what would we do without volunteers?
A lot of laundry. But they really are the bread and butter of what we're able to accomplish every day. I will talk up all of the staff that we have, and with the volunteers' help, we're able, the staff's able to do those extra tasks that kind of fall behind, just because the volunteers are picking up and doing those things and really just enriching the animals' lives, because it is a stressful place, no matter how.
But I'm so proud of that shelter. I kid you not. You guys know I just pop in. You know what I mean? It's always clean. It's always orderly. I mean, I'm just so, so proud of that shelter.
Thank you. I go to work every day, and I don't wake up dreading having to go to work. So, I'm proud of it too, but it's really the people that work there and the volunteers and our fosters that.
Well, the work you do is so important. I mean, it's so important. And if you remember what there was before the shelter, I mean, no disrespect to the facilities that were out there, but they're not appropriate at all. I mean, you just don't do that, and it's nobody's fault. It's what was there, and population exploded around it. But we took action, you know, and I'm very proud of that, you know. Animals shouldn't be treated that way.
Yep, and I'm happy to go to work every day, and it's that team. We have what I think is one of the world's best veterinarians, full-time on staff.
The place is best in the state. I tell everybody, it's best in the state, bar none.
Now, one thing I would not have known, I think Crystal and I had a conversation about this. I was getting rid of just stacks of towels and sent them to the animal shelter. If people want to drop by any old towels, do you accept those?
Yes.
Oh, even old towels? I didn't know that.
Yep, we can make use of just about anything, even pillowcases.
Really?
Yeah, they fit perfectly at the, like a cat bed. You put a pillowcase over that, so that way you can get multiple uses out of the bed, just take off the pillowcase and clean that.
Careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
There'll be cows stacked up as high as their roof in a week.
If that was the worst thing to happen to us, that would be okay.
That'd be a good day.
Yes, that'd be a good day. Yes, we accept all sorts of donations, and it's on our website.
I would have never thought about that, yeah.
I wouldn't have either.
So, next step is a public hearing?
Yes.
Do you get that scheduled?
We can get it scheduled.
Do you want to motion, Brett?
Sure.
So, I'm going to be authorized staff to advertise for public hearing to hear from the public on the changes to the animal control ordinance.
Second.
I motion a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Have a good day.
Nice job.
You too.
Almost right on schedule. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, sir. To maintain decorum, the Board of County Commissioners adheres to established procedural rules first adopted in 1989 that are applied in a viewpoint-neutral way to generally, only genuinely disruptive or threatening behavior. As invited speaker addressing topics pertaining to county government, please observe the following guidelines. All remarks and conduct must be respectful and refrain from personal attacks, inflammatory language, or disruptive behavior. Prior to commencing your remarks, please state your full name for the record. Individual speakers are allocated two minutes. Designated representatives speaking on behalf of an organization are allocated five minutes. Individuals seeking to influence governmental decisions are called lobbyists and are required to register in advance with the Ethics Commission prior to engaging with the board. Anybody here wish to provide public comment?
I will, John. I'm Myra Gowan. I'm speaking for Calvert Citizens United. I'm the founder of that little group. And first and foremost, I want to let you know that Emily is one of the best people that we have worked with. She's kept everybody abreast of everything. She asks, "Do we need anything? Do we want to leave a message for you all?" She has been beyond belief, and I want to congratulate her, and I want to congratulate you all. I know it's taken almost 16 months to adopt this bill, but you've adopted it, and that's a wonderful thing. And the citizens recognize that, and they recognize that you've been behind them. I want to share another item, and I wrote it down because it was from the past president of this small business interest group, SPIG. And I'm not going to step on that person's grave, but I want to share this with you. It was all over our internet. It was in and out of our county in 2019. This is what he said, and you can look it up. "We formed a coalition with our government, with three commissioners, Willis, all the people, Mary Beth Cook, everybody." "We formed a coalition with them four and a half years ago." He said this right before you all adopted the comprehensive plan. "When everybody was complaining about the planning commission, the third floor, we formed a coalition and worked hard and worked with them, and now we're getting criticized." I just want you to know that that's nice, that they asked everything, the builders and developers, that they worked hard, that they had everybody backing them, except the citizens. And that is the one group they left out. I hope that you will stay on track. I hope that you will listen to our citizens, and I hope that you will respect the fragility, the fragileness of our county. It's the smallest county in Maryland. It's the sixth smallest county in the whole United States. I thank you. I thank you for your time, and I thank you that it was a five to, you know, all five of you voted. Thanks kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See no one else in the room, and there is no one online.
Thank you. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like you all to keep in your prayers the Wilson family who lost a loved one this week, so keep them in your prayers, please. Also, tonight is National Night Out. Please come out, enjoy the great weather and the great food and the great fellowship that these communities have offered. I think there's, like President Hans said, there's 14 or 15 of them tonight. So, get out while the weather is good and enjoy the fellowship. I also want to give Stephen a warm welcome in his new position as Deputy County Administrator. Welcome, and if anything we can do, please reach out, and we're here to help you as you're here to help us and the citizens of Calvert County. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart.
Just want to echo Commissioner Cox, everything he said. And also, you know, we addressed it first thing this morning, the incident that happened at the Southern Library. And I know that's, it's been all over social media and the media outlets and stuff, and we take it extremely serious that, number one, nobody should feel unsafe at our libraries, much less anywhere else in the county, and that we are addressing it. And I feel so bad for everybody involved in that. But I want to say thank you to everybody on social media for all the support for law enforcement and first responders. It's really cool to live in a place that supports doing the right thing, it supports law enforcement, and all the efforts. And I truly appreciate that. I know it was a hot topic yesterday, as it should be, but it's, like I say, it's, we haven't stopped talking about it and trying to find the best ways to address it, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Presson.
I'd also like to welcome Stephen on board. Welcome. We're here for you. So, thank you for being here. You were a great selection for us, so thank you so much. National Night Out is tonight. I'll be at Shores of Calvert and Callum Field. I want to encourage everyone to support local, support our farmers markets. And you know, our small businesses in Calvert County, they're the backbone of the county. And it is Black Business Month, and support our black businesses, support all of our small businesses. I went to a ribbon cutting very early on as a commissioner, and I noticed that the lady was no longer in business. And I did First Friday, and I happened upon her with a booth at North Beach on a Friday night. And I said, "My gosh, what happened?" I was so hopeful that you'd make it. And she said, "Really wasn't a good location for us, so we moved to Chesapeake Beach." And she said, "They're doing quite well." So, support our businesses, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ireland.
Commissioner Hart, talking about the incident in Solomon's, we're working with surrounding jurisdictions to make sure that we do our part to keep our citizens safe here. Sheriff's Office is a grease patrol, checks in that area. While this is an isolated incident that happened there, it could happen anywhere. There's several new businesses we just celebrate. As Commissioner Presson said, we do ribbon cuttings. And these are three young female entrepreneurs that just started their business right next to the library in Solomon's. I mean, it could have been there, it could have been anywhere. So, we just want to let our citizens know that, as Commissioner Hart said, we are taking this very, very seriously and doing our part to, you know, ensure the safety of our citizens and hopefully see the successful prosecution of the suspect that did this. As Commissioner Cox said, Larry Wilson lost his battle with cancer. He was a county historian. He was a prominent business owner with a passion for farming. He could tell some stories. He was definitely a character. Stephen, welcome. We're looking forward to working with you and see what we can get done with your assistance.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, I forgot to mention, we have town center surveys out now, and the surveys are active through August 25th. And we're asking for feedback on the surveys from Owens Hunting Town and St. Leonard Town Centers. I want the public to be aware that we work for you. I know you know that, but we work for you. And these surveys help us to put forth what you want to happen in our county. So, this is your opportunity. Please take advantage of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, my fellow Commissioners have taken care of everything today. I don't have anything to do. Do want to again, thanks, Stephen, and welcome him aboard, and he showed up the second day, so that's a good sign.
That is.
We do appreciate you and hope that your experience can do great things here. We look forward to it for sure. Just to reiterate everything everybody else has said, want to send my condolences out to the Wilson family. Larry participated in a lot of commissions and boards, and he was a great character. And so, one of Calvert County's old characters, so it's just sad to see those kind of people go. And as Commissioner Presson said, you know, the town surveys are out. Make sure we participate, because we know what happens when things happen, and. because we know what happens when things happen and you don't like them, but this is where you make those decisions. This is where you set that course. So it's important that you all participate. So we hope that you do that and those letters are due by August the 25th. Yeah. And to National Night Out, if you've never been to a National Night event, you should go out, join in. There's a rumor going around, Broom's Own has the best one, you know. We'll see. We'll see. The organizer keeps saying that, but...
Yes, every year he does say that, yes.
They are going to have the state police helicopter there tonight, weather permitting and it's available. So you can get to see that up close and personal, but it is a great opportunity to meet your neighbors. It's an excuse to go out and actually introduce yourself and get to know your neighbors and kids. They usually have a lot of kids' events, so it's a fun time. And tonight's not going to be 100 degrees like it is some years. It's going to be a little bit cooler, so it's a good time. So if you go on the website, you can see where they are. There's like 14 or 15 of them around the county. So join us out if you can. So I guess that's all I have to say today, just appreciate it. And as Commissioner Brassner said, don't forget your farmers markets. And if you go to the Calvert County Ag website, you'll see all the farmers in the county that participate and have products to sell. It's not just vegetables, it's just about anything you need you can find locally produced. And that money is so important to keep in this community and it's what keeps our rural character. You have to keep those farmers profitable and this is how you do it. And you get something in return. So it's a great program. So please, support our local farmers. With that, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to General provisions article section 3-305B1I to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the board has jurisdiction. Three, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in matters directly related thereto. And seven, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. That, please, love you, ladies.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everyone, have a great day.